If anyone wants to speak on an issue that they would like to report to the school committee, there is an opportunity for public forum also at the end of our agenda. And then I will say this also, we're going to do a presentation early on that will show some pictures of the new building that's planned. And so if people have questions, I think the superintendent will speak about transition a little bit. And if people have questions at that point, you can go as well. If anyone wants to public forum, I can see none. I'll post a public forum. And then our first presentation is from the Kind of School. That could also be the introduction.
Excellent. Thank you. We're just so excited to be here this evening at the Kind of to hear from our students and our teachers about work they're doing in terms of integrating technology in classrooms. And I don't want to spend all of their time, so we'll hand it over to our kind of professionals.
Good evening, everyone. We're happy to host the school committee meeting here at the Kind of this evening. And we're really proud of our second and fifth grade students and teaching team. They're going to be featuring some of the technology integration that we're doing here at Kind of. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Diaz, the library specialist.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lydia Diaz, the library specialist here at Kind of. And Jackie Duplee is the digital learning specialist for the district. And so we have the job of integrating the standards of computer science and digital literacy with all the other academic areas. And so we worked hard to do that, developing curriculum in connection with our teachers. And our students have a lot to present to you today, so we look forward to showing you that.
All right. Thanks, Lydia. So as Lydia said, I'm Jackie Duplee. I'm the K to five digital learning specialist here at Mottertown. And so first up, what we are going to show you is an interactive lesson that I created using the SMARTboard for grades K to two. The digital learning standards involve that students are going to be able to recognize the devices that they use in the classroom as well as in the real world. So this interactive lesson here, obviously because they're in kindergarten, we had to read to them a lot of the words. So we told them what the word said, and they came up and used the board interactively to pick up the devices to recognize which ones were used in the classroom versus which ones would be found at home or in other places. To start off, students have to do now, when they first learn how to use the interactive features, by tapping the pens. And then as we move forward, you'll see in a bit, the drag-and-drop features of the interactive SMARTboard, students are able to come up. And with each box, they're able to recognize the computer, whether that's found in the classroom or whether an iPhone is found in the real world, or it's something that can be used to help enhance their learning.
So next is the B blocks that we have used a lot throughout the district. And our district coordinator, Rashmi Venkumah, is going to come and introduce that to you.
I'll just use teacher voice. So we are very, very grateful. The district has provided B-bots for all elementary schools. And they have been integrated into mathematics and English line charts. You can see an example of one where they are counting bugs, one to 10. They go up to 12, and sometimes they add them up. So you have two die, and you would see three plus two gets to five, and the B-bots move on those maps. So it's a very integrated technology experience where they're doing bi-directional programming, sequencing between grades K to two. And the next one that we have, we've been exploring robot typing with Widos. We've been doing environmental robots. And a lot of that work has been going on with the innovations class, integrating into the classrooms. So it's a really wonderful challenge. We have all three to five graders engage in this activity during CSM week instead of week.
So this is our first project we're presenting. It's a third grade group of students. Debbie Hunger came to me and asked me to integrate the technology into her science standard for climate. And so we together met and developed the idea of having the students use their Chromebooks and Google Slides, focusing on the computer science skill of dragging and dropping images, selecting images, and then the presentation skills for ELA. And the product is up here. So there's a group of three third graders that work together on explaining Autumn in Massachusetts. And we have two second graders here today, pre-K to three in the innovations class. We worked on Scratch Junior storyboards, so the connection of using iPads and a computer coding software along with the ELA standards of writing and presentation. So we have Luca to start. If he could come on. He's going to introduce his storyboard, and then we'll play it so we can see the coding in action.
I worked hard on this coding Scratch junior innovation. It is fun to use Scratch Junior on iPads because you use your imagination and get to customize your characters and the settings. I changed the character's color segment, and I dropped the coding blocks into the workspace to make the characters move. The characters named us pretty in the loop. They go to the beach one day, and then it goes around the bend, see them all.
Luca wrote his whole script there, as all the students did tonight. And that's also him recorded as a coding block in the video. Next, we have Ian Croft. Come on up.
I worked very hard to complete this Scratch Junior storyboard. This story is about a cat who is swimming with a whale. The cat goes up to the beach, and it walks home down the street, and then goes to bed. There are four settings in my story.
So next, I'd like to introduce Maureen Morphy, a special ed teacher, and Danielle Camino, a fifth grade classroom teacher. They approached me earlier this year on ways to collaborate and introduce digital learning standards into their explore project for social studies for a research unit. So they're going to talk a little bit more about the rubric and the project that they designed and ways that we work together to collaborate and include technology.
Hi, so I'm Danielle Camino. I'm the general ed classroom teacher. And Maureen and I are co-teaching this year, so she is in the classroom with me the whole day. So we get to co-plan and co-teach lessons. So it's really nice. So one of the things that we did with social studies was we came up with this project for explorers. We integrated not only technology, but also reading. We were doing a nonfiction reading unit, and the kids researched nonfiction texts, understanding explorers. So that was another kind of connection across the curriculum that we were able to incorporate. But Maureen was the one who really made our rubrics. I want her to talk a little bit about that.
So a lot of the things that Danielle and I have been really working with this year is how we co-teach effectively. And our PLT, our professional learning goal, has been how we can collaborate in the classroom better to reach the needs of all the students in the classroom. So one of the things that we've really focused in on is how we give effective and actionable feedbacks. We've been working on how to confer. And for this project, we decided that we wanted to do a rubric that would give us some practice on how we can give that feedback to students. So I think you might have a copy of that. But in that, we have the ways that you get your 12 out of 12. And this was really great because we could sit with students and look through their rubric, and it was objective, and actionable. So we could say, okay, what do you need to score high in your content? And they could actually go ahead and do those tasks without us having to explicitly tell them what to do.
So we actually have three students here today who did a great job incorporating the technology and creating the Adobe Spark presentation. So we'd love to bring them up. These are three fifth grade students. Ready? Come on. All right. Now let them introduce themselves to you.
Hi, I'm Edward Golan.
Hi, I'm Catherine Walker.
And I'm Keeson Rodriguez.
All right, Edward. Can you explain your project to us, and then Ms. Diaz will play it?
Creating this presentation was an adventure for me. Researching a new ELA and PBS, and then creating the digital presentation has been learning in the memory of explorers. Presenting in front of my class, and now in front of you, means that I'll always remember that information about Cortez.
This is the adventures of Fred Cortez.
Researching these explorers and creating a digital presentation was a fun experience. I learned how to insert images and choose key information about fonts and beyond to add to this presentation.
Creating a presentation helped me explain what I learned about Henry Hudson to my class.
How many years? General facts. His date of birth is 1565. And his place of birth is England, and his school factor is he got education and childhood. Most of his education and childhood are run out. The only things known are his family, his wealthy, and their birthplace. Accomplishments. Have children or daughters married. He made fortresses, he founded roots Asia in the future. Olden, olden, big, wild, exploring, and we're here. The sponsor was the Dutch East India Company. His motive was to sell to Asia, and when it had the impact that he had, he fell. How did he get there? Well, I'm not really sure. He was kicked off the ship and sent to a boat in Lurie, who, that's a, ooh, that's a good one.
All right. So again, thank you very much. And a special thank you to our students who came today to present. They all did very well.
I just want to say thank you to Vina Charloni and Rashmi, also to the head administrators, Dee Dee, and Teresa, for their support for the technology and digital learning team.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thanks to the students especially for all the work that you did. So questions or thoughts, comments from any one of the school committee?
Thank you, everyone. That was a great presentation. And it makes it so exciting to study and research things when you get to use technology and that too. So, and I assume my question is that the Adobe Spark is on Chromebooks? Is that how they do all these? The program is on Chromebooks, right?
Yeah.
So this is an extension that we have on Chromebooks. Awesome. Thank you. Very good.
I have one question actually for the teachers that do the team teaching. Maybe you could just describe a little bit. I'm curious whether, is typically one teacher leading the class and the other supporting, and you alternate that? Or do you, I'm kind of just thinking of the dynamics of your day, your typical day, what that looks like, if you could say. Because the team teaching is something that we added to the district in the last year or two at a higher level. So I'm just curious if you could speak a little bit to that, if you don't mind.
So we try to mix up the ways that we teach. So there's like five or six different ways to co-teach. So the first way is obviously one teacher leads and the other one supports. And we find, we found in the beginning of the year, that's mostly what we were doing. So we've been trying to incorporate other ways that we can switch it up. So we started where she'll teach social studies and I'll teach science. So we each have a turn being kind of that lead teacher and the one that's supporting. In math, we've kind of gone parallel to each other. So if she needs to pull a group aside and teach a lesson one way, then I'll pull another group aside and teach it a different way. Do you want to add it?
They actually are very much on the forefront in our school. And I just want them to use one example of a lesson I saw the other day where they did the exit ticket for math at the beginning. And that would be really nice.
So one of the things that we've been really working on is to make sure we meet all students. And so for our math, we've been working on our math class. And what we've decided to do is every now, every time that a student comes in, they do an exit ticket, which is just a quick three to five minute activity from the lesson the day before. And I do the exit tickets usually. And we sort of kind of look at the exit tickets of who got it and who might need some reteach. So I'm scoring that as Danielle starts the lesson. And then from there, after the mini lesson, we can actually group students based on our exit ticket and that feedback, and then sort of differentiate the instruction from there. So we always use our exit tickets as a way to look at the groupings and kind of address the skills that we might need to reteach.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, those comments. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks again to the students and the teachers for coming tonight. And we appreciate it very much. You can stay longer too. Actually, the next item you want to stay for. So the next item on the agenda, we moved up, we often have the kind of building for the future updated, which is our construction projects. And we moved that up so that we could talk first about the Kind of and the elementary school projects. And then we'll have a little bit of an update also on the high school project. But we have, there's a couple posters. There's one over there which shows the new school, the proposed new school. And then we have a few slides here. And I'll let the superintendent speak to the slides.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we're very pleased to be at the Kind of this evening. It was not done by design, but it's great because of the fact that we were just mentioning that probably come, you know, July or August, this part of the building might not even be here anymore. So we were very fortunate this past week to be able to finalize an agreement to lease the space at St. Jude's, which is going to enable us to use that as swing space starting in September of 2020. Originally, the plan would have put us out two to three years to start the project here at the Kind of. But by utilizing the space at St. Jude's, which is now going to be called Kind of West, we are able to swing the Kind of in there and get the work done within, by January of 2022. So unfortunately, there's one class, the fifth graders, who might not be part of that new building, but all the students K to four are going to be able to spend time in the new building once it opens. So it's very exciting news for the Kind of. And we're just very pleased and thankful for all the work that went on to ensure that that was something that was viable for this community. So that was big news, and that's why it's kind of exciting to be here at the Kind of. But since that news came out, and since we're here, a lot of people have been wondering, because now it's back in the forefront of, oh, so what is that building going to look like again? So we wanted to share with the community just some basic images around what the Kind of will look like in January of 2022. So the first picture of representation here, we have is just the actual building from the outside. The new Kind of building, if you are trying to get an orientation, will be basically behind, kind of abutting the cemetery behind us. It will be a three-story building. And the way that the building will be laid out is that first floor, which is the big beautiful entrance, will also warehouse, will house our kindergarten students, as well as music and art, and one of our learning support programs as well. So that will be on the first floor. Then as you move up the floors, the second floor will be our grades one and two. And then our third floor will be grades three, four, and five. And throughout that, as you know, if you were remembering two years ago, we discussed the fact that we'll have space and capacity to swing. If we have bubbles, classrooms can be utilized either as classrooms or potentially as science labs or less rooms as well. So the building is perfectly designed for the Kind of, and it's going to be providing great opportunities for our students. One thing you notice on this first slide is the solar panel canopy. So the entire building is, will be fully sustainable, and we have just the whole items. The architects have strategically placed solar panels along the building on the top, as well as utilizing areas in the parking, as well to capture the solar energy to be used in our buildings. So that's very exciting as well. It will have playground space and a field to friends, and plenty of parking. And it's just, it's beautiful. I'm very, very excited about the future of the Kind of. So the next picture is just some views of the interior spaces. This is a hallway. And, you know, so you can get a sense of, your learning is both inside and outside of the classroom, as well as inside and outside of the building. The dish just shows there's a lot of movements in and out. And you can see also there are features of the building that become part of the instruction. So you'll see there's themes and exposed areas, so the students really get a sense of how buildings are, how they are built and stay standing. So the next picture is just an area of breakout space again, outside of one of the classrooms. This is on the second floor. And again, the next picture is just a more view of breakout spaces in the hallways. Then move on to a space outside of the gymnasium, lobby area. So if, one of the things that's going to happen for the Kind of is we're going from our modest gymnasium to a full-size gymnasium, which is very exciting. So that will be able to provide more community use as well as providing students with great gymnasium for their physical education classroom classes. So that's one of the major advances for the Kind of. Here's just another view of the area outside of the gymnasium. Here's a view of the area inside of our gymnasium. For those of you either watching this or here in the audience, if you have been to the Kind of Gymnasium, you'll know that it's very small. And you see from this picture it's much larger and better suited for our community. And then the last picture we got here is just an inside of a classroom view, just a typical, you know, we'll have very flexible seating tables. The walls will all be teaching areas, big beautiful windows, lighting that is responsive to the environment. So it is dark outside, the lights get brighter. It's bright outside, the lights open down. So it'll be very responsive to the environment around us. And the building itself will be air-conditioned, and will have excellent heating and ventilation. So these are all improvements, certainly to all our buildings, but the Kind of especially. And again, for the historians that have been, I feel like it's history now, the two years that we've been talking, two to three years that we've been talking about, this now will really hype. But the point is, is that, you know, when we first started talking about the Kind of project, we weren't necessarily talking about a brand new building. But it was decided, you know, about two years ago, that it made far more sense to have a new building here at the Kind of. And, you know, I'm just so pleased that there is such support from the community and the town to be able to provide this learning environment for students from, you know, from the ground up. So that's just a view of the Kind of. And just a couple of words about the move to the Kind of West. Principal Charloni and I, as well as a large group of others who are from the town and from our public, our internal buildings toured the Kind of West, looking at, you know, how are we going to correspond with the classrooms that we have here with the space that we have there. And we're just very excited about the fact that it's going to be a fairly seamless transition. The building's a little bit smaller, but not in terms of the numbers of rooms. But we will absolutely make it happen. And I think that the transition will be very, very easy for our students and our teachers. And we are working on move management plans, determining how best to pack up our things and move. So that's where we're at with the Kind of Elementary School Project.
Do you want to do a broader elementary? Do you want to speak to, do you have more in elementary, in the chapter?
The official one, not the question.
Yeah, the other, the other school that's going to be majorly impacted this summer is the Hosmer Elementary School. So originally, again, we thought of the Hosmer as first. So we've already, you know, been thinking about the move and planning with our move managers as to, you know, how it is that we're going to move everybody out of, if you know, the plan for the Hosmer is we're taking down the auditorium, the gymnasium, the preschool, and cafeteria, and the connector area. It's all that we'll be taking down beginning of the summer. So all of the people who are inhabiting those areas, and including the fact that we need to have light service and gym time, all moving into the, what we call the Z-shaped part of the Hosmer, that's been underway in terms of planning how best to do that. One of the things that came from that, which I do believe, I don't know in all fairness to the larger community, but the preschool is moving to the Phillips Administration Building. And we're also relocating all four of our pre-K classrooms to the Phillips Administration Building. This is partially due to the fact that eventually, when we move into the Hosmer, the early childhood program will be at the Hosmer. So all pre-K and preschool will be there when the Hosmer is finished. But it made sense, given the fact that we're swinging into Kind of West. It helps us in terms of space for the existing Kind of program. And also moving the Lowell pre-K will enable us to potentially add a kindergarten classroom there, if you have an extra classroom at the Hosmer. So they will not have space for another kindergarten classroom. So it just made sense to make that move to an early childhood center now. And that is the plan in kind of September 2020, that we will house all of our early childhood programs at the Phillips Administration Building. So those are the big moving parts right now, temporarily, yes. So those are the big moving parts right now, temporarily, yes, until the Hosmer space is done, or potentially until the Lowell space is done as well, just to not have as much of an impact at the Hosmer. So it could be two or three years, no more than three.
Which one do you have? Your honor, roll.
So we had a community forum this past Tuesday evening. It was our second community forum about the high school. So right now, we are at the stage of writing the educational plan for what will happen within the new high school building. That is actually almost completed at this point. That is something that gets submitted to the MSBA. They want to make sure that they have a full understanding of what we're proposing to do within our buildings, so that we have the adequate space to do the programs that we're proposing. So that's one major piece that's happening right now. And then the second piece is really evaluating potential locations for the new high school, so for the renovated high school. And the major focus at the community forum was looking at some options that are available at the existing sites, and then looking at potentially options that might be available at the church field. So those are the two areas that we're considering at this point in time. There's a school building committee meeting on Wednesday evening where we'll continue that conversation. But I just, as we always say, right now, we're just evaluating options. We're not making any decisions. We will then focus on which ones are actually viable and determine what's going to be best, but that won't happen until probably later this summer. So we're just at that moment of looking at all possibilities for the high school.
Okay, thank you. So let me, if any school committee member has a question, or from the public, if you have a question either on the elementary or the high school, is an opportunity if you have, want to ask a question. One other comment I would make with respect to the elementary, the new buildings, is, and I think the superintendent kind of made reference to this, with the solar panels, is that the architect is designing very energy-efficient buildings. It will be very tight, if you will, in terms of energy. And the solar panels are a major part of that. But even within the buildings themselves, as I think teachers get used to, with new buildings there, there will be lots of different kinds of efficiencies that are achieved in both buildings, the Hosmer as well as the new Kuntz. Is there a question?
How would you measure the number of rooms?
So, question is, how many classrooms? Sixteen?
Eighteen. Well, there's sixteen at Kuntz West. So that's the, so the first step is at Kuntz West, there'll be sixteen classrooms, which is the same amount of classrooms that we have here currently. And when we move into the new Kuntz, there'll be eighteen classrooms. So that's just to make sure that we have enough room in case there's a class that's a little bit bigger than another classroom, including an art room and a music room and a big gymnasium, and a larger construction.
Any other, good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, we have some action items that we have before us, several of those. First one is the compensation for non-aligned staff. And this is a proposal from the superintendent.
Excellent. At this point in time, we have several staff members that are either salaried on contracts, independent contracts, not part of a large bargaining unit. And we also have staff members who are hourly workers, that we need to determine their compensation for fiscal year 20, which is actually this year right now. The delay is largely in part due to the negotiations with our Unit A teachers. So we'd like to ensure that we're through with those negotiations before negotiating any of the non-aligned staff members. So at this point, we are looking at the cost of living adjustments for the majority of these people, nineteen of them, at 2.25%. And then we do have several, another additional beat members who are looking at a COLA as well as a market adjustments. So that's where we're at right now, and then hourly workers, which would include lunch aides and door monitors and security officers, those are the hourly workers that would also receive a 2.25% COLA.
So if we add those three groups up, the two and a quarter cost of living adjustments, market adjustments, as well as the hourly increase that takes those people just a few cents above the minimum wage for Massachusetts, we end up with a total compensation increase of $78,927. So I guess I would look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve $78,927.
Second.
So a motion's been made to, to approve $78,927. It's been seconded. Again, just to be clear, this is actually for the current fiscal year that we're in right now. This is not the coming up, this is the current fiscal year. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
None.
opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you. Next item is the policy for the disposition of surplus property. And so we have a memo, a short memo to this effect, that I sent to the school committee. Every, at most of our school committee meetings, just by way of background, at most of our school committee meetings, we often vote for, required by law, we vote to approve the surplusing of property, various kinds of property that are no longer used by the district. With the upcoming project, process of closing out, if you will, both the Hosmer and the Kuntz, we're going to, they're going to be disposing of a lot of different property that, on a relatively quick basis, in order to facilitate shutdown of those buildings and then moving to the next building. And it would be a significant disadvantage if, if they had to wait to do that every time, to wait for a vote from us to do that. So there's a proposed motion that we're putting forward that had a discussion with the superintendent, the business manager, and actually our attorney. And so I will, I will read the proposed motion. Commencing now and through the conclusion of the period of school construction or major renovation for the new elementary schools and the high school, the administration may dispose of surplus property as it deems appropriate to facilitate the demolition or renovation of existing buildings and construction of new buildings. On a monthly basis, the administration shall provide the school committee with a list of items declared surplus. So I guess I would look for someone to make that motion.
Sure.
So discussion, questions on the motion? So, so seeing none, all in favor?
None.
opposed? Yes, have it. Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have the school committee meeting January sixth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
None.
opposed? None? Yes, have it. Moving to reports, a couple different reports. We'll start first with the superintendent's mid-cycle review. Again, by way of background, we, the superintendent has annual goals that we established, you know, her, she put forward some goals. We had a conversation with her about those towards the end of the summer. And so, and those goals were approved by us in September. And as part of the process of evaluation is a mid-cycle review and have an update on where she is with respect, the superintendent is with respect to those goals. And then at the end of the summer, or midsummer, we'll have a review of the entire year. So Dr. Wilson.
Thank you. So as was just said, this is a moment in time to reflect on our progress to date, well, my progress to date on our goals. I, is it just meant to be a snapshot, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have along the way. It's basically color-coded into three, three different colors. Three of the significant progress on or complete. The yellow is in progress on targets, and the red is not yet started or in progress but missed the targets, which I wouldn't measure the red. So the first goal is professional practice to improve. I should, I have a mistake there. So fair and effective educator goal setting and evaluation. So this is, with the district leadership team together, we will develop a common understanding of what instructional excellence looks like. And this whole point is making sure that our administrators who are evaluating teachers are in classrooms and giving teachers, we heard the word actionable feedback from our teachers to their students, same thing for our administrators to the teachers. One of the things that I put on here that's a little bit different than last year's goal was working with our coordinators. So we've talked about it over the past two years, that we are doing learning walks, that we are meeting with the principals individually, that we walk around and visit classrooms. So those are still things that we're doing within the district. But one of the things that I put on this year's goals would be doing coordinator visits. So what I've been working my way through, the coordinators, I think we have fourteen coordinators, Teresa, right? Yes, including special education coordinators. So what I do is I meet with them, we talk about their goals, we talk about the things that they're doing within their buildings, and then we visit classrooms within their departments, and then we review what it is that we've seen in terms of effective teaching practice. And that has been invaluable for me, not only to, again, get into classrooms, but to meet with the coordinators and just to hear specifically what they're working on and, like I said, I'm happily through that, and I should be done with that by early March in terms of working with all the coordinators. So I think we're doing really, really well with that particular goal. The second goal is effective communication with the larger school community. So the one, so a couple of areas that are yellow here is continuing the strategy for the effective use of updates, newsletters, and the website and social media. So I think that we're doing really well, I feel that we're doing really well with this. But certainly, social media is something that's always a little bit of a challenge, so I did make that green, and we did yellow, because I still want to focus on how best to use social media. And we do have our content curators who are reviewing our websites, and we're meeting with them on a regular basis. So I think, you know, we had a transition with Rush Media as the new website's content curator for the district, so there was a little bit of a transition to the purple, but I think we're doing very well with that as well. So the one area of red, which is red in two different areas of my goals, is creating the Watertown Public Schools Annual Reports. I was supposed to do that in the fall of 2019. It is not yet complete. This is probably something that is very, it's very important, and I know it needs to be done. I just have not had the ability to dedicate the time that it takes to put that together, and haven't yet figured out the best way, if I need to delegate that, how best to do that. So I will admit that I would like to have that done, but I'm not done. So goal three is a building for the future elementary and high school projects. So, you know, in terms of these goals, the actions in these goals, you know, they're progress on targets. This is going to be a multi-year goal. One of the things that we are revitalizing is the School Building Committee Communications Team, and we are working on how best to distribute information, especially now that we are right in the thick of starting construction of the elementary schools, and that's going to be essential. So we are continuing on that. And I think that we are working right along with the MSBA. We are meeting all of our targets in terms of submissions to them, and right now, like I said before, the educational program is what we're working on currently. Goal four, systems and structures that ensure equity, engage all Watertown Public Schools' faculty and staff in raising anti-bias and inclusive practices that promote equity and ensure all students feel valued and supported in their learning. You know, I think we're well on track for this school year in terms of our actions. We did broaden the equity leadership team. We have about thirty people on that team at this point in time across all of our buildings. We have partnered with Facing History and Ourselves, which, as you'll see on the agenda, we have an event on February sixth at 6:00 p.m., which is a little PR over the middle of this. That's an evening for parents and any community members who want to learn more about Facing History and Ourselves and the work that we're doing with our teachers. They will be presenting to the general community about the work that we're doing in our schools. So that's exciting. And then, you know, the significant progress in establishing the shared vision of what equity means, I think this again takes years. I don't think it's something that you do within one year, but I think that we are certainly putting equity in the forefront. We heard it this evening in our presentation, when we heard from our co-teachers about ensuring that all students are able to be successful and using their formative assessments. So that's just an example of teachers really working hard to ensure that all students have great opportunities in the Watertown Public Schools. So we are, I have worked in partnership through the NSIP program with Educational Resource Strategies. We are still in that process with NSIP. I haven't yet had the directs looking at Watertown's data with them, but that is something that we will do in the spring. And then we are starting to work on the faculty book study, cultural response to teaching in the brain. That is something that was discussed when I had equity leaders teaming just last week. And we'll continue working with the anti-bias coalition. I probably would make that green, honestly, now that I'm looking at that, because we're making significant progress on that. The anti-bias coalition has offered, you know, monthly presentations. They've been very well attended, you know, well over a hundred people or more to the events, which is fantastic, I think, when you try to do community events. So I think that's certainly something they will work towards. Goal five is increased student growth and achievement for all students in the Watertown Public Schools. This is something that, you know, is in the realm of Dr. McGinnis and myself. Really a lot of this has more to do with her, but in general, it's my goal, because I believe that strengthening teaching awareness is all Harvard. So she is working with her team to create a multi-year curriculum alignment revision and development plan. I think they're actually pretty well-developed in that one. And connecting the K-12 math program for the review, they're well on their way on that as well. We are soon to be closing for instructional leadership teams at the elementary level. I think in the next week or two, we will do that, and those will become institutionalized in our district. An instructional leadership team, in case you're curious, is a room of teachers at each of the buildings. They're building-based. They'll be about nine members strong, one teacher from each grade level, as well as a special educator, a specialist, and an ESL teacher. And their function in essence is to meet regularly to discuss the larger school and to help with the principal in terms of districts, sorry, school-level initiatives and the school improvement plans, as well as just the district-level initiatives as well. So we're very excited about that. We're providing coaching support and special learning opportunities to teachers K-8s. So remember, this year is our first year to have middle school coaches. So we had two coaches at the beginning of the year. We did have one coach who retired, but we are supplementing that with programs from Harvard University, and we will hire another math coach in the coming year. But it's very exciting to see that in our schools K-8s. And then the middle school instructional leadership team is working on the turnaround plan year one. We have done learning walks at the middle school, and one of the things that was, they're one of their key practices, was using learning targets. And every time we go in the middle school, they are definitely evidence, and the students are internalizing why they report. So I see that already in place in the middle school. Goal six is around tiered system of support. So if you recall, we tried to focus a little more this year on literacy. One of the, the key action steps in this was to revise our district curriculum accommodation plan. That's actually a general education plan to provide interventions and strategies for students who might be struggling within the general content, but might not necessarily need to have specialized instruction. And so community forums, they are almost done. It was actually, that meeting was complete at the middle school PTO meeting, right? When we talked about the D cap?
Yes.
Yes. So right now, the D cap team is working with PTOs and the larger faculty about what the D cap is proposing, and so we feel that that will be done by March, right, Teresa? And at that point in time, we're going to present it to the school committee so that you can see the work on the D cap. The other thing that we're doing is attending a two-day intensive session with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on multi-tiered systems of support. We're taking a team of ten to really think about that larger, multi-year plan and providing, they will provide specific facilities on how best to develop that. So that's part of that as well. So goal seven, shared vision for district improvements. So that, so I think the area right here too is, in that annual report, we were, we will provide the community with some areas that show our, measure our growth and our achievement of our district improvement strategy. So since that has not yet been done, that is an area that I need to work on. So... But other than that, we are continuing with year two of our district strategy. Next year will be year three, and then we'll let that at the end of year four and start the process of creating a district improvement strategy for the next three years. But I think that we're doing very well in terms of our district improvement strategy, with the exception of putting together the annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. One, is administrative comment I would make that, because we're broadcasting here from the Kuntz, we don't have the same kind of... here from the, the, we don't have the, the same kind of, uh, technology with respect to the, the cable. So if, if someone is watching this at a later point, uh, the document that we're talking about here, the mid-cycle review, uh, if you went to the, the Watertown Public Schools website, and went to the agenda, they go to that document, it'll be linked to the agenda schedule. Um, questions, comments from committee members?
Um, in goal six, the establishment process to determine appropriate targeted literacy interventions. Can you just have a little?
Yep. So, um, the, so when you create a tiered system of support, what you're doing is, um, working, looking at data with regards to a specific student, and, um, based upon the data, whether it be, uh, the universal screening of priorities, or it's the benchmark assessment system, um, you try to drill down and find out exactly what the underlying cause might be, and then you need to make sure that you match the appropriate interventions and strategies for that, that particular issue. Um, so in the, in the, in the past, in completely well-intentioned, um, oftentimes, you know, people would know that a student was struggling with reading, it's a very broad, general, you know, topic. And so you would try many different things, but it might not be as strategic as if you try to pinpoint and narrow what the actual issue is. So the process for doing that would be, we currently have, um, general education team meetings, which are, they're called GET team meetings, um, and we're working on trying to make those a little bit more, um, strategic and targeted, and looking at specific data about a student, and then, um, determining what those interventions might be. So it's a two-part process, it's how do you develop a, 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 a system to, to drill down and find out what the, the issue is, but then it's also making appropriate matches in terms of the interventions. So that's work that's done with the reading specialists, the reading coaches, um, and other people who might be, you know, particularly in tune with the students, so generally the teachers that are working with the kid, to develop a plan as to, you know, oftentimes they're referred to as an RTI plan, or just a general plan as to what are we going to try, how are we going to try it to see if it's actually working. Um, so that's something that the school, the elementary school principals had, um, all identified in their, their school improvement plans, that that was something they were going to work on specifically with literacy, and that is definitely the work that they're doing within their buildings. Um, but remember that ideally, in districts, we would have a, a larger plan that was a, a district-level, you know, RTI, Response to Intervention Plan, um, but it, it was too large to tackle on that, you know, district level. So the principals are working specifically within their buildings, and now we're going to get with that larger plan.
And that, you could extrapolate like a K to five, you could extrapolate a K to five literacy plan, and then say, okay, you have a model for it, and you, and you replicate it for math, and then you K to nine. I mean, is that, is that how it goes?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Develops the process, and then, and then expand from there. Um, right now, I'm talking to water, but right now, uh, what I'm noticing is that even in math, even though that might not be articulated here, that the, um, the K-8 math coordinator, as well as her math coaches, are looking at very specific interventions. Um, they've bought, they have participating programs, um, I saw one in action just the other day with the math coach working with students. Um, you know, so it's not just literacy that we're looking at, new ways to meet specific needs of kids. Um, but I think the key here is getting to figure out exactly what the issue might be, and then targeting it very specifically so that the student moves right along and then is able to catch up.
Yes. And for the curriculum of math program curriculum review, when do you feel, when, when will that be complete and some decisions made regarding, uh, next years, you know, whatever program is?
I'm going to, um, have Dr. McGinnis speak to that a little bit more.
Thank you. So we'll report out in June, but the next steps right now that we're working on is soliciting interest from area educators who have done this before to come be external, um, participants and give us a view, they spend some time in the district, and give us their perceptions based on our work that we have, um, of how we're doing. So we're going to gather that feedback, um, as part of the planning process.
And if the decision is June, is there time, if there's a new program brought into the middle school, for example, to have development, it's important to do this.
Yeah, as we're going along, um, all of that is being discussed, in fact, today, we had a discussion, is there anything right now that we could prepare teachers with and purchase this year with the funds? But we're not at that decision point yet. So certainly a long day to do as we get there, but we are not. Um, we have our June institute, we're having the third year in a row, which is right after school gets out for two to three days, um, where we have curriculum and professional development. So we're, uh, anticipating that we'll have one of those days with sessions for, around mathematics. Uh, we don't have that defined yet in January, um, but it's definitely something over the next two months we'll be working on. Sure?
Other, other questions, comments? I just, just a couple of quick comments. Um, one, I think there's, there are a lot of things, when you go through this, this cycle review, I mean, the superintendent's, um, work reflects what's going on in the district, I mean, she's kind of responsible for all of that. So, um, I, it's, it's exciting to hear about, you know, that some of the things that are happening this year, I think, like the instructional leadership teams at the elementary school, I think that's very, kind of interesting development, be very interested to see how those, uh, kind of, uh, evolve and the role they play. I mean, I think the coaches at the middle school is kind of a, an important initiative. There's lots of other things going on as well. One thing I want to just raise to the, the committee in general, um, and I've had some conversation with the superintendent about this a little bit, and I, I have a concern, um, uh, that with the, the building process, that I think we, we may need to think about, you know, are there other ways to, to support the superintendent, uh, in, in the kind of overall work that she has? Because she's, you know, on the, on the building committee, she's taking a lead role, now we have both elementary schools moving at the same time, which was not going to happen before, uh, that was going to be more phased out, now they're happening at the same time. And I just, you know, from my experience working with her, um, it's a lot. Uh, and so I think we need to, to, to think about, um, you know, is there a way to give some support for her, uh, so that she can continue to focus on the various kinds of very important initiatives in the school, in the buildings, uh, but then also have these major construction projects going on as well. And so I just kind of put that out there as a, uh, an issue that I think we need to be cognizant of, and, you know, I'll continue to have a conversation with her about that, but, um, I think it's something we need to, to look at sooner rather than later, uh, so that she can kind of, uh, get the proper support that she needs. Other questions, thoughts? Okay, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda, uh, is back to the superintendent, the high school principal search.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, so you, in the audience, um, received information about the fact that we have three principal finalists, um, candidates for the high school principal. And I am, sorry, let me just, you could just give me one second, because I have that open and I was just. Okay, there we go. Uh, so once again, I'm going to start at work. Last week, uh, there was a group of seventeen people who, uh, and that was led by Dr. McGinnis, um, she chaired the screening committee. Um, the screening committee evaluated, um, well, like sixteen, seventeen candidates, sixteen candidates, um, and they interviewed eight, um, as, uh, part of the screening process. Um, and so they did that on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Um, they deliberated for probably the two hours, about two of the finalists to be, and they provided me with three excellent finalists to, um, bring into the district this week. And so the three finalists are, uh, Ms. Jennifer, Jennifer Hamilton, who will be in our district on Wednesday, uh, Mr. Joel Giacchino, who will be here on Thursday, and then Mr. Matthew Pasca, who will be here on Friday. Um, so the point of inviting these candidates into the district is they will spend, um, about five hours, uh, within our school, the high school, and they will meet, um, students, they will have lunch with students, they will tour the building, um, get a sense of who we are at Watertown High School, um, then they will meet with our PTO, with our school site council, they'll meet with the admin council, cabinet and coordinators, they'll meet with the administrative team, um, at high school, the assistant principals, the administrative assistants, instructional supports, um, any, any of the staff, um, the teachers can meet with them at that point. Um, then they will meet with the faculty, um, at about three fifteen, and then at three forty-five, they will meet with parents and guardians and community members, um, and then that will come and meet with a public interview at four thirty P M. And all of these events will happen at the lecture hall of the high school. Um, I just want to remind the people in this, because we've been through a couple of administrative searches since I began as superintendent, but, um, the way that, that I conduct that final, final public interview is a conversation between myself and the candidates, um, but anybody's invited to come and, um, listen, and then provide feedback at the end. It's not an interactive with the, the audience, but it is a chance to hear the candidates interact with me and learn more about, um, their views on education and how they're a great fit for Watertown High School. So, um, we are very excited again about this process in that we yielded three excellent candidates. This is a very important position, um, not just because it's that high school principal, which is a very important position, but due to the fact that we're also moving into that building project, um, we need to have somebody in there who understands the complexities of that while leading in an excellent institution. So very pleased with the candidates. Um, yes, and then before I pass it on, just to, um, after this, this round, um, if I determine that it's necessary to do site business, I will go into these candidates' districts, um, next week, uh, and same sort of thing, but in reverse, meet with different groups of people within their district and find out what their life as leaders within their district. And I'm hoping to make that decision, then the final decision, before February break.
Thank you. As, uh, Dr. Gelson mentioned, there were seventeen people on the committee, um, two of our, uh, school committee members, several teachers, um, and what was particularly exciting is we had two students, a freshman student and a sophomore student, and they were such an integral, men, integral members of the team, took it very seriously, they had meet rooms every day, um, but they gave us a lot of information and thoughtful, um, support towards the candidates that, um, every, all of the adults on the committee remarked how proud they were of these students, and they, they were kind of old souls, were freshmen and sophomores in high school who were so high. So we thank you to Trino and Laura.
Any, any questions, comments, any principal search? Yeah, yeah, um, yeah. But thanks to Lily and Lindsay, that's what it says, um, uh, for your work, that's a, it's a considerable time commitment, appreciate that. I didn't mention at the very beginning, Lily, uh, Lily Raymond, he's not here, she's unable to be here tonight, but, uh, thanks to both of them for their work on that search. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Next would be the school committee chair, I, I just have, uh, you know, two thank yous, uh, also one to, again, to the kind of school, to Principal Charboni for, uh, hosting us here, and for the, the students and teachers that were here before. And also I wanted to, to thank, just kind of broadly, uh, to the various school groups, the, the PTOs and others who, uh, have stepped up to provide support to the families that have been displaced because of the fire in the Rocket Ford apartment area. And I know that's, there are been, there are students, I think, at all levels that are impacted by that, that have been displaced, and that the PTOs and, and others from all the different schools are collecting items to help support that group. So I want to, you know, from the school committee, I want to thank all of them for that support and that help to, to those people that have had very unfortunate circumstances. Superintendent, please report.
Well, again, I think I've spoken a lot this evening, so I don't have all that much to add, and I was going to also echo your, um, your thanks to the community in the Watertown Public Schools community in terms of, uh, over the weekend, coming together to, uh, provide donations for the families. Um, I would announce to the, to the community, at this point in time, um, I think the, the area of most need might be gift cards. Um, certainly, you know, the outpouring of clothing and, um, food and, um, other toiletries, et cetera, were, it was amazing, and now they, they don't even have room anymore in the, having authority to hold what they've been given. So we'll still collect, um, such items, we're going to keep them actually in the kind of basement, um, and then as people settle, I'm sure they'll have more needs, but right now, as the families, um, in theory, will be placed in their new housing, um, tomorrow or at the latest, the next day, they will have to re, you know, refurnish their entire homes. So having, you know, gift cards to Walmart or Target, I think will go a long way in terms of helping to buy those, you know, basic things to even start a new household. Um, so just once again, very proud to be in this community that is just very supportive in times of need, but also, um, supportive of in times of joy. Um, we just spent last Monday the Martin Luther King Jr. community breakfast, um, where we had over five hundred people come together to celebrate the, the life of Martin Luther King Jr., and I think that what we saw in terms of the outpouring speaks to that idea of his beloved community and, um, how it is that we, we come together in, in good times and bad. So, um, I thought that was, um, just a nice way of demonstrating those principles.
Thank you, Dr. Gelson. Um, new business, next item, new business. Seeing that, we have some announcements that we want to mention here, um, the anti, or we mentioned, but the Anti-Bias Coalition on the twenty-eighth, the School Building Committee, uh, meets on Wednesday at, uh, six o'clock at the, uh, Town Hall. Uh, I will say that I know the Sustainability Subcommittee is meeting at five o'clock before that, and the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meets on January thirtieth, which would be Thursday, timing is late, time is next, you know?
Yes, five o'clock for school administration.
Five o'clock. And that will be the, the first meeting of the Subcommittee, kind of looking at the next budget, the fiscal year twenty-one, uh, budget.
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget, right, right. Then the Policy Subcommittee is meeting on February third. Uh, I know, has the time been set for that? Four? So four P M. Also, the Administration of Building, um, School Building Committee meeting again in February fifth. Uh, the Curriculum Subcommittee on February sixth.
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
What time is that?
Great question, please. I'm going with that one. Uh, three thirty.
Three thirty in the Administration building?
Yeah, we're discussing the program studies.
Okay. High school?
Yep.
Okay, high school program study. Um, the Anti-Bias Coalition again on February sixth, uh, in the middle school auditorium.
Uh, yes.
Correct?
Do not provide it.
Okay. That's the, you mentioned that's the Facing History and Ourselves.
Yes.
And then our next school committee meeting is February tenth, uh, at seven o'clock, unless we have an executive session, but, uh, in Town Hall. Last item in public forum? Speak. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Close. Bye, Ted. Thank you very much.